15:30 in the conference meeting. The seat select board to order. John.
Here.
And is here Kathy. Brian.
Here.
And Jeff.
Yeah.
Okay. Are there public comments on non-agenda items here or remote?
This need AI meeting is being recorded by AI?
Yeah, I just got an alert asking that. It may just be a new function of Zoom.
I know Debbie uses a separate tool outside of Zoom, but she downloaded the script.
Or has Deb been replaced by downsizing already?
So there's nothing in the chat?
Okay.
Oh, we'll bring it while chat.
And nobody has put up a hand.
No.
Okay. Fine. I haven't got a chairman's report. Is there anything anyone would like to do with the with the agenda, with the action items? Great. The next item on the agenda is a review of the fire department fee schedule. I gather the chief is here.
The chief is on Zoom?
Yep.
Good evening.
Yes, would you like to just give us an idea of what's changed?
So the fees over the course of forever haven't really been updated. They were last updated in 2021. Doing a little research and comparing us to about 30 to 35 different communities, I found that other communities were charging for some things that we worked. So I compiled the list and basically I took the ones that made the most sense for Manchester, added those in. The one thing that you'll see is the added fees are new. A lot of our inspections and the fees that are associated with them, the fee is determined by a mass general law. We are able to add an administrative fee on top of it because we're going to electronic records management system and we can kind of prove that this is an added cost over and above the traditional permit fee historically. So in the areas in which we can do that, I have done that. And I've also documented the mass general law guarantees to each inspection when relevant.
I'm intrigued that we went to a an electronic record system and it's more administrative work than it was without it.
It's more the cost of the records management system of the ongoing upkeep of it, not so much personnel hours. It's technological fees if you would.
Okay. Anyone?
And this is consistent with other communities?
Yes.
Yeah. My only question was, how, you know, had you taken a look at how, whether or not some of these fees really cover the cost of the fees of the actions that you're taking?
Yeah, so in doing so, I have to say obviously the fee itself within the master general law guidance on some of those. Ones that we did add that I saw a need for, you'll see the cooking fires on Sing Beach historically, those have been free. Upgrading that to $10 and then also adding a fee onto if somebody stopped having a cooking fire without a permit. That's come up a few times this year, so that's a new one. And the other one was inspections for liquor licenses. Historically, we did not charge a fee for that, but obviously that takes time and staff hours to complete those documents and then correlate with the, or coordinate rather, with the other time requirements.
So I guess, so that's great. And then my only other question is, how are we collecting the fees? Is the collection non-labor intensive as well?
Yes, so we have three different avenues where we can do fees. We'll be rolling out a full online system. Our vendors are just getting that up, but we can do credit cards, they can do automatically online, they can, permitting permits, for instance, is a great example, went live this year through our system. The resident just goes onto their portal, gets a bribe, pays for it, and then accounted to a queue system for myself or the captain to just basically put our eyes on it and approve the permit. Other ones, obviously permits are tied to inspections as well. So sometimes there's multiple things going on, permits and inspections.
Thank you.
What's a tent permit? Just curious.
So for large events, if people have a large tent on their property, they need to have fire extinguishers, carbon dioxide detectors, depending on what type of heating elements are being used for foods and things like that. You see those for a lot of weddings on some of the estates.
Okay.
On the ocean.
So are these the maximum we can charge under the state?
Yes, and these are the maximum that I found for any community, basically, from the 35 different communities that I pulled.
Okay, great, thanks.
So when you updated these, your fee can be any number up to the max here?
Correct, with the, so for instance, like a smoking tent inspection, mass general law dictates it's $50 and there's no administrative fee. So sometimes depending on what the verbage is in the code, we can, or if it's silent, then we can charge an administrative fee.
Okay, and that was done based upon referencing other communities because that's not a mass general law requirement or administration?
Correct.
Okay. And a question on these annual fees, is that, does annual just mean if somebody comes in and gets one of those annual, annual permits, it's good for a year from whenever they got it?
Correct.
Okay, it's not like it's renewed. If they renew it two years from now, well, then the clock starts again when they renew it.
Exactly.
Okay, I understand that. Okay.
One other question. We have a carnival coming up in October, right? All those trailers, who, do we have to inspect those trailers, the residents, the state, is that police, is that you, is that the board of health?
All of the above. So the food trailers typically are the pro paver's license in the community in which they reside.
Okay.
For instance, I just did a food trailer this morning for one that home bases Manchester. The board of health has to come in and do a visual inspection of it actually set up and typically we'll do a walkthrough just to make sure that everything looks co-sastic.
Ignorance, what are hot works?
Welding, brazing of pipes, things like, things of that nature.
Okay, so something a plumber might be doing?
An open flame or?
Yeah, open flame. Typically, the, a plumber fixing a water line is not constituted hot works permit. If they're brazing or if they welded steel would be one. And a certain copy of that based upon occupancy classifications as well. You know, if it's a high hazard occupancy, that might trigger a hot works permit in detail.
Another question. How many permits are issued per year, typical year, and what's the revenue associated with that?
That is a great question. I will have to get back to on, I can probably shoot you an email on 20 minutes while I use Polar Pro.
I'm fine.
At a time.
And you have very many, I see on the bottom, re-inspection fee. This is whatever, certain inspections, there were problems. Does that happen very often or?
It happens probably once or twice a week and it's unfortunately usually the same people.
Oh.
So real estate agents, things like that, that basically should know better. And this is just a mechanism to make sure that when we go out, it's done right the first time. And many times the guys will go by and actually do a pre-visits and we're going to charge for those, is when we're actually out there to do the inspection.
Okay. All right, this is like real estate agents, fire, fire detectors, things like that.
Yeah.
They know that they've got to have them.
Yeah.
Any other questions here or remote? Okay.
A motion?
Yes.
A move that the select board approved the fee schedule as recommended by the fire chief.
Second. Jeff.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Anne says yes, and Jeff.
Yes.
And just if it's okay with you guys for our implementation of October 1st, just so I can use notifications and things like that.
Is that okay with us? Nods all around.
Yeah.
Jeff.
Perfect, thank you.
Right, the next item on the agenda is the North Shore Regional 911 update. Zoom that our officers are here to talk about that?
Yes, and you have, you have a memo in the backup with some statistics there. The chief and I had a call with North Shore Regional today to kind of go through some of those statistics and some, get some other updates. I'll let the chief really give the overall, but you know, from my understanding, and it sounds like we're having a very good experience with North Shore Regional, they're fully staffed. They're looking to staff up even a little bit more because they have North Reading joining by the fall of this year. And it seems like where things are going really well. Took a bunch of notes, but I'll.
Yeah, no, I think just follow up on what Tony said. So Jake and I continue to be involved in the chief executive boards so we get regular updates from them. North Reading is going in finalizing their onboarding fall of '25. Rowley has recently gone in, they went in kind of like we did on a emergency faster pace because they were losing staff. Bauxford is, looks like the beginning, excuse me, Groveland is in December, January timeframe, they'll be going in. Bauxford is sometime in 2026, later on, and Hamilton should make a final decision sometime in September of when they, when or they will go in or not. They are staffing, they got five new hires, she told us today, and seven in the pipeline that should cover the new onboarding communities. And things that we've done this year, one of the things that Regional took over is to help us with some radio infrastructure in the Magnolia area of town. And Jake could probably comment more on that because he was more involved than I. Those are some of the high level things that we've discussed today.
No, I just, you know, I think that they've, the staff has spent a lot of time with police and fire here with, you know, whether that be trainings or ride-alongs or continued communication. They've talked to, they've done some training on terminology with the fire department and the blue card incident training so that when they are dispatching and they're getting information back and forth between our staff and their staff, they're able to, you know, do that efficiently. So it sounds like it's been going really well. And the fact that they've staffed up and are going to staff up even more doesn't raise any sort of concern for us. They give us an annual report on their, you know, their timing rates. So we'll monitor that on an annual basis to make sure there's nothing, no issues.
What are their timing rates?
They were, they were going to send me the report and she may have sent it to me after we got off the call, but I haven't looked through it. They, they basically, they measure from when the phone rings until when they pick up, you know, so from ring to pickup time and then from pickup time to dispatch time. Every other, you know, after that, the response timing is really on us. So what we would want to keep an eye on is that, you know, their staff levels are high enough or staff well enough that, you know, on their end, there's no extended.
It's not ringing and ringing and ringing.
Exactly. But it sounds like there hasn't been, and they said that when they onboarded Manchester about C was, it was, you know, like a model process.
That was got the ball rolling while I was on the.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were the first.
I think a lot, I think a lot of other communities were waiting to see how our onboarding went and they saw how well it went, so they jumped on board.
Just call.
Right, right, a little bit of something every time we.
Every time someone else calls, I want a piece.
So how much, how much input do you have before they take on a new customer?
They discuss it at these meetings when the executive meets with the chiefs and the town administrators and then there's a vote.
Okay, so there is a vote. You, I just want to make sure we are voting because that was one of the things that the existing communities had to let us in, right? I want, I just wanted to make sure that is still the case. Okay, okay.
The, just, I'm looking at this, so the fireworks, so that was Memlex trailer?
That was by the, the department of fires.
Okay, and then there was staffed by?
Chief.
Chief just. I would strongly urge you guys to take a look at that next, if they're going to do it again this year. Todd took me through it last fireworks and there was a call going on over there.
Yeah.
It was impressive. So I would, if you got an opportunity, want to set up, take a look.
I'm looking at the statistics and it looks like from '24 to '25, if we keep going at the rate we are, will be like 25% more than last year. Is that about right?
It's more, yeah, 2025.
Yeah. So is that, is there a reason for that or?
I think it's accurate, more accurate record management.
So it's not that, maybe not.
Well, I think some of the call, the call volume has definitely gone up on both police and fire. It can speak to the fire department, but I think on our end, most of it is the record system that accurately logging these calls.
Yeah, I just noticed that. I was wondering.
Look one down, oh, it's only half a year.
Right, yeah. And, and I also think it's the better training, it's a better quality product, so better information is going in because we've had better training. So it's just.
It's all about what you're putting into it. So it's getting better as we go.
And I will add that they're very receptive when we had some questions or comments from the public that we investigate, they're receptive, they give us all the information, they give us the recording. And, you know, a lot of times people, when they call, they don't want to stress, they don't want to ask questions, but those questions are really important, especially in the medical side of things because they can give pre-arrival instructions and they're going to dictate the level of services dispatched, especially if there's multiple calls coming on. So, you know, I can't speak high enough of them, they do a great job, they're professional and more importantly, they're responsive to any issues or inquiries that we make.
So when you say the record management system, we've been on the system now, what, three years or something? So in other words, I'm assuming they changed the record management system and all of a sudden it was a change in the data that it was at one trend or maybe no trend?
Yeah.
And all of a sudden it jumped? It's not like it's been going straight up? Okay, so I understand the conclusion.
Is your feeling as a long-term officer that actually, the actual call volume is up or?
I think our call volume is up, especially mental health calls. I think that's a component of it, but I think that the information that's going into this system is better and is tracking what we're doing better.
Okay. So when we went on the system originally, we had some duplicate systems here in Manchester that we were considering getting rid of so we don't pay. We still have them?
Still have them.
Okay.
That has not been resolved.
And is it, do we know why that is? Is it just, we really like them better or is it, you just don't have the time and energy or money to do it?
We don't have, we can't find someone to adequately put, pick the data out of the old system, put it into the.
So it's data conversion?
Data conversion.
So is your.
Plus it's the cost.
So your historical data is still in the old system?
Those.
Okay, so.
Some of, I mean, some of it we have to keep forever. Some of it we don't really need to keep. So after talking with town council, when Greg was here at the time, we decided it's easier and quicker to take everything and put it in than rather than, than, than the pick and choose and try and go through it all. And less and it'll be more cost effective.
Your IT group helped you make that decision?
IT, yeah, IT was involved.
Just because historical data, you know, there's always some new fangled technology. You remember, did you ever use a floppy drive, right? Okay, right? And then, oh, we had to get rid of those, so we had to decide what to keep and what. So the innovation isn't done and it will never be done. So you have to think of the historical data as baggage and over time, the cost of that baggage does start to increase. So I think, Tony, as we enter into budget season, it's always worth taking a look at, gosh, is it, is it cheaper to get rid of the baggage or is it cheaper to carry it?
It's going to be, long-term, it's going to be cheaper to spend the money now to have it.
That's, that's what I'm, 40 years in IT is what I'm kind of getting at, so thank you, yes. Fast way of saying it. So we have to figure out a way of understanding what data we have to keep and just do the dirty deed and get it over, you know, to the new system or to archive, you know, sometimes it's just an archive that you look at and don't touch. You may not need the, the data in the new system, you just have a separate cheap archive system, but over time that gets very expensive.
If I remember correctly, off the top of my head, we're paying about $7,500 a year for the old system and the cost was about $24,000.
Yeah, and, and is it running on old computers like, or, yeah, so that's, that's just going to get ugly. We've got to bite the bullet and figure out a plan there. Okay, thank you.
Is the problem with upgrading finance, money or finding someone who can do it?
I don't think it was money, so to speak, but it was finding someone, finding someone with the skills to do it.
Well, you can always find someone with the skills, but it's a rarer and rarer skill, the longer you wait and therefore it gets more and more expensive and therefore that's, it's always a matter of money. And the rarer the skill becomes, the more money you have to pay to get it done.
So we thought. It's also, it's not just scale of converting the data or.
Just understanding the data.
Finding, yeah, what you have to keep or.
So we thought we had someone because Beverly just switched the IMC from the system that we still had. The regional worklist to give him, to give us a proposal, but then all of a sudden it was like, no, I'm not doing it.
Yeah, yeah. We're getting, I'm, I'm on the young side, I'll just say, of the technologists that you are talking about. You have a window of opportunity and you get on it, otherwise it's just gone.
I'll just add that, and chief, if you don't mind, I'll add that, you know, having Regional 911, especially right now, we have, we have a few officers that are out on leave, paternity leave or paternity leave and, you know, so having Regional and avoiding having to actually man the, the front desk there really helps us out, you know, as, as far as having officers on the street, as far as overtime costs, things of that nature. So there's another huge benefit there and it's, and it's being seen right now.
I remember we had 40, four full-time people.
Wow.
We haven't been managing, but staffing the, the, yeah, so what we ended up building was having the officer in charge of the cell phone. The region's transferring calls to that cell phone rather than have them come off the street.
Sounds as if you're moving into the 21st century.
Either relationship is doing well or.
Jake, do you want to add anything?
No, I, I think that it's going very well and it's, there's a lot more coordination. I think you think adding in a third department, dispatch department, that actually brought all of us closer just because we can concentrate on our area and it makes all the areas flow so much more smoothly.
What an excellent outcome.
Yes.
And I can certainly testify that when you call.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I've called to her every time to pass you through. Thank you very much.
May I ask, before the police, chief of police leaves, because I tried to find him, I have something very good about him that I would like. It says.
If you have something nice to say.
It's very nice.
Okay.
Because I wanted to appreciate what they have done for my husband this past week and I'm sure you were maybe told by the two young men who went to the train. Yes, because I, him and I had gone, I didn't know that the chief would be here tonight. And I went to the police station, so I got the names of the young men, but we had gone to the INR for his checkup and because the train was coming, I said, we're not taking this one, I'm going to Shaw's, you stay here, pass in, but they, well, many weeks later, my husband was gone, so I thought he had gone someplace anyway. I went crazy, it was, I didn't know what happened and they were very helpful there to go everywhere looking and so on. They assumed that she took the train, they could come to me. So they got in touch with you, I suppose, here at the department?
I see all of it.
Because they were down, I was told by my sons when I asked them to go and see if their father was arriving, that they were two, they told me they were two young men, were very nice. And I have to say that the, the ones who have accounted, accounted, you know, police anywhere for anything, they have been very nice people, including the picket ones. And that they're very polite and very nice. And they, my husband said that they were very nice, two young men, one was Zach, if you remember the other person's name, that's my kid, and that was right. And they offered to take him home because they thought maybe he might be in trouble or, you know, I said, no, I like the exercise, I just think. They were all, they have been always very nice.
Or anything else to be said about Regional 911?
Nope.
Oh, and if they need an IT guy, our youngest son worked 16 years in a big IT place, is available.
All right, can I? Can I?
Okay. The zone reports. Jeff?
Let's see. For the DPW, they're signing a contract this week, I think with regard to a contractor who will install the meters. And so that should happen, start, start to go within the next few weeks, but I know they have a contract out to a final bidder, a bidder that they decided on. And second, they've added some better marking on the footpath between the parking lot and downtown back here. I don't know if you've seen that recently.
I saw it on the weekend, I noticed it right away, it was very helpful.
So they've got, they painted on the, on the, on the asphalt, some arrows and things and comment, that's the way to downtown, et cetera. And they'll also be trimming, in fact, maybe taking down, I think, a couple of the trees along the pathway that are, well, they're dirty in the sense they're dropping branches. They're not really offering a whole lot to the, the, you know, the pathway there. So I think they're going to take, take a couple of trees down, but I think that's Henderson's, Henderson has put some X's on it, trees, so they'll, they'll come down. With regard to the historic district commission, they had a meeting last Thursday and they approved some solar panels on a house in, on Harbor Street, or I guess on, on Bridge Street. And it's a house that has a couple of flat roofs on either side of the houses, like a solarium area, and the roofs are flat because otherwise they could never do this in the historic district. And especially on the harbor because on the harbor, both the front and the back of the house are public ways because on the harbor, that's a public way. So, but these panels are not on, on the slanted roof, they are on the flat roofs on either side. And I guess they can angle them probably five or 10 degrees, you're still not going to see them because the roofs are flat. So it worked out, but, and then all the time that I've been associated with the HDC, we've only approved one solar panel and it was back over behind chapel or, you know, in the houses that are, that are over here and it was really totally out of sight. So they did approve those solar panels and that's a novel, novel approval, I think. And other than that, council on aging the seniors, still questions about the docs, how that's coming. There was an ad in a. ad in a cricket on KADA. I don't know if you saw that this past, this past week. So that's happening, and I'll be taking a ride with KADA. In fact, you're a candidate.
Some of us have got mailings from them, too.
Oh, okay.
No, I got them.
Oh, good. Great.
I didn't.
Well, that's because you're a child.
That's the good news.
There you go.
Oh, then again, I have to check. Put that along with my exercise.
All right. So that's it for me.
Great. Yeah.
Planning board, had a discussion about proposed changes, bizarro in the downtown or making a downtown district. Without getting too crazy into this, it's mostly based around kind of limiting commercial changing into residential, I would say, is the bulk of the whole proposed zoning changes. Mostly two families, three families, four families, that nature. Eli asked them about town meeting, and said they'd have to be pretty much ready by, I think, early September. And I don't know, they'll be ready with this. I would kind of think, um, there was a little talk about change, not really even a change, just driveways permitting, and that was pretty much just like cleanup thing.
Is it two entrance or?
Well, some of it was more about access for emergency vehicles and stuff like that. And then grandfathering in existing driveways and things of that.
Jake had mentioned that they were going through entrances, as part of their approach to the.
Yeah, the.
Community firefighting, I guess, as it was checking.
Yeah. So I think they're trying to make zoning reflect that as far as. And, yeah.
Fox Rec, which is winding down, they're struggling. They'll get through it. There's his leave, this staff goes off to college, but that's a name a little bit. Cheryl's used to be in the. Heather is starting to crank up now for after school programs. Tuesdays and Thursdays are already sold out. They opened up and they opened it up first of July. And that's historic, always those two days are historic. As far as any other events, the, we should be seeing something about the carnival soon. It'll be a scaled back carnival. Many vendors, because. Both of them are more concerned about just getting the, that'll be a scaled back version, but it'll still be the same amount of apparatus, mostly the same kind of visitors, out of town visitors. The cargo boat race is coming up, too. So you done on your calendar?
I think I.
October 12. So I will be reaching out to everyone. As far as public safety goes, Chuck, with the, uh, removing the cardboard. Todd.
Yeah. New wet suit or?
I don't know. I might borrow it. It was cold last year.
Free of annual.
Get people looking at it. It's kind of like anything else. You open up your mouth, and then you gotta fall through it. Put yourself in the corner. So that, so that's that, that got to that. Yeah. ZBA, nothing going on this month. So there's nothing new in the, with the zoning board. And that's all I got.
Bike and Ped meets later this week, so nothing there. Downtown Improvement doesn't meet again until September. We had our first facilities planning committee meeting on Friday, which is kind of a get to know you meeting. Everyone went around and introduced themselves, and we discussed some some goals, the committee. I think one of the things that we we pushed on a little bit is that some of the harbor projects, like the Harbor Master Building or whatever, was initially deemed out of scope. So I think we kind of pushed on that a little bit. So I think we have some scope discussions we need to go through. There are some things we discussed which are really not part of the scope or should be part of the scope. So I think, you know, whenever our company is gonna get solid on what the scope needs to be. And then the the team is Chuck and Nate are gonna take some folks on tour for, like, four places this Friday, the police station, fire station, Essex Public Safety Building, and the DPW Building. I miss it. I can't go on any of them, so Chuck's gonna give me a guided tour of DPW. I think maybe one other person on the committee can't make it this Friday as well. So we'll try and coordinate what we've missed. But, you know, other than that, I think it's it's good. It's just, we've got to get crisp on our scope. And then gonna push on some next steps. And I would say next steps is. Lots more to.
The school committee will not be meeting tomorrow. Their next meeting is on September 2nd, which is the same time we're meeting. So that's not going to be a good time to introduce you. I did make it to a, or health meeting, where they approved a preliminary septic plan for construction way out on some, out on Summer Street. It's it's an interesting piece, because there's a very strong cliff, and the the septic system is down here, and the house is up here.
Oh, wow.
Well, no.
You know what they say, shit rolls down hill.
Yes, and it will.
The two Desmond Avenue. The hearing had been scheduled for the day after this meeting, and they had already decided to postpone that for thirty days and made some conditions. One of them was that the housing, yeah, right. Yeah, Wendy would be allowed into the house, and I gather she has been. And that they have, by the 28th, which is the next board of health meeting, that they have either a sign up by the plumbing inspector or word from the, from a plumber with a contract saying what the scope of work is and how how he's going to approach, how it's going to be approached. And at that point, the thirty days will be very nearly over. So, or they will decide whether to extend for another thirty days or just go ahead with.
Receiver.
Receiver ship, yeah, sorry. And that's that, nothing else that I'm looking at meets until later. We have the, I think that's the liaison updates. We have the consent agenda. I have a couple of, a few NIS on the consent agenda. And I don't know, yeah, I mean, most of it is not very interesting. In the August 4th, I don't think that he, John, mentioned that residents had requested handicap parking at West Beach.
Yes, they did. I had a chat with Chuck, or I guess it was Nate, this afternoon, about the feasibility of doing something like that. It didn't make too much sense because basically, if you put up a sign that says this is handicap parking, the whole space and its surrounding has to meet certain criteria. And you're on a beach.
Yeah, right.
And sand and everything else. And this was somebody that had come up, come by during the festival. And as he said, practically speaking, it does not make sense. I guess there was one instance where all the cars were blocked, the areas, you know, they're all rocks, except for two different areas that you could gain access. And both of those were blocked by cars. So somebody, I think, in a wheelchair could not really get on the beach, but rare situation. So I think it's gonna take a pass on that.
But you're just talking the the actual residents requesting handicap parking at West Beach.
Does it say west, or does it say?
At West.
Oh, it's, it's White Beach.
It's white, yeah.
Yeah.
W here, W there. Just because it's one of my thought buttons. The scoreboard is at the Burke Street Field or the Coach Ed Field Field. Coach Ed Field was my homeroom teacher.
He was mine, too, so. He spanned a couple generations.
He was there a long time. And I, I just.
Did you class together, school together?
Oh, God, no.
That was a year behind, yeah.
I probably went with your mother. No, uh.
The only other, well, I have a comment on the Boston Post cane.
Okay, well, when.
Are we in consent agenda items?
Consent agenda items, I'm still.
Going down your to do.
Going down my to do list. The transfers, and I've forgotten where they are. It would be nice if, when they're documenting transfers, it's where it came from and as well as where it went to. The other materials are available, but somebody who's just going to figure out what's going on would be easier if they, if if the in and out were both, were both I'm prepared to approve the the minutes subject to those corrections. They're motion.
Make a, I move the select board approve the consent agenda items as listed, well, with, with changes.
Yeah.
One second.
A second.
Yes.
Anne says, yes.
You get what you're paying for.
Right.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
You had another comment, Post Kane.
Yeah, there is a date for that.
Okay, good.
August 27th, 1 P. M.
Is that working?
The twenty something Bennett Street. Let's see.
Okay.
Let me see. I think I wrote that down here, something, 29 Bennett Street, across the street from Todd Fitzgerald. In fact, Todd's gonna be there because it's his neighbor. Carolyn Anderson is 99 years old, and apparently very with.
It's a long time since we've joined.
All right. So if you guys can make it.
Right. What time is that?
One o'clock on August 27th, Wednesday.
That's nap time. I'll be supervising, I'll be supervising nap time.
It's also her bedtime.
Twenty, twenty nine or?
August 27th, at 29 Bennett.
At 29, okay.
There's an award I'll never get.
So, well, past awardee, the past few years, it's been, they managed to do two years in a row. And in fact, I was speaking with Debbie. She, they award the cane in Rockport, they call it, the tech cane.
Oh.
Just because of a little morbid, but.
Yes.
These are.
Yeah, if you win it once, and you still love it, you're the other.
More power to you.
Proof of morale.
Well, some new, some of the old could move into town, right?
That's true.
Yeah, I suppose.
Anyway, Carol, I look forward to meeting her, and as many of you who can make it should look forward to that.
It's middle of my day.
Yes, thank you. The state approved our MBTA 3A zoning last week, I believe. We were notified. So even though it's been a while, it did get approved. And I think it's worth, you know, repeating the, I'm sure the many accolades are, that have been provided to those who worked on it. But I know that's, that was a, a big task for our town and many towns, and the planning board, and select board, and members of the town meeting, and anyone else who worked on that. That was a, that was a big lift. And, you know, having it approved was kind of the.
Is it?
Last step in the process.
Must be that the Attorney General had to approve things. This is the E O H L C.
This one had to, yeah, this one, the Attorney General's Office and E O H L C worked closely together on, on approving, you know, the, every, every town had very different approaches. So making sure that it was compliant with state law. Ours is, so that's good.
So there are no more hurdles?
No more hurdles for that one. On Thursday, we have our workshop meeting at 5:30. I talked with John a little bit about.
I thought it was 5:30.
We did 5:30 because that's how you had it scheduled la, the last time you did.
I've been worse since then.
Guys, have fun. I'm on a way next week, so.
No, this is coming Thursday.
This is coming.
It's Thursday.
Three days.
It's Thursday.
Yes.
I was getting that.
You almost got out of it.
So it could be like me and show up late anyway, because you thought it was.
Yeah, he shows up at seven.
I thought it was later. So it's, I want to, I'm sure it's 5:30. I'll put that on the calendar.
5:30. And.
Here, room seven or room?
Room seven. We pulled up the PowerPoint that Greg had put together for the last, the last time you guys met. And it looked to, you know, goals, priorities. We've talked in this setting about transfer of responsibilities and things of that nature. So if you have anything you want to include, that agenda or PowerPoint, send it over ahead of time, and I'll, or we can just go through it at the meeting.
You have Brett's presentation from last year. Can you see that?
I, so I, yes.
With just a link to where?
I have a scanned version of it that I scanned today. I haven't found the electronic version of it yet.
Okay, yeah, because our email gets deleted every thirty days, and I didn't see.
Yeah. The Republic strike is ongoing. We've, we've tried to work with them on getting recycling back here. They weren't able to do it this week, but we will continue to meet with them and talk to them daily about, you know, need for them to, need to get their services up to speed. We haven't received a bill yet for the month of July. I've heard of other communities that have received a bill, and that it was adjusted for the services that they actually provided, which is a good sign. I'm happy to hear that. Certainly, if we got a full bill, we'd be adjusting it ourselves.
Are we tracking what we're spending?
Yes.
Extra, so we're tracking that separately.
Yes, we're not, we're tracking where they are falling short and any additional costs that we're taking on.
DPW guys.
Yes.
What, what does the contract say about their responsibility?
So our, our contract has a force majeure section in it that actually protects Republic from damages due to a strike. But there are fees that we can impose for missed services and things of that nature. What we've, what we have done with the thirteen other communities is have sent a letter to Republic and in conversation with them that we don't plan on, you know, paying them the full rate because of the causes of the strike. We'll see how that works out later on, and how Republic will respond to that. Because legally, the contract, you know, does provide them some protection. But our council, along with many of these other towns, are, you know, gearing up for that conversation.
When is their contract over?
The end of this fiscal year.
Are there alternatives, alternatives?
Yeah. The, one of the big topics we'll talk, we're gonna talk about this Thursday night, is getting ourselves prepared for that contract being up and potentially going out to bid for renewing with Republic. for renewing with Republic. But procurement law doesn't require that we bid out waste services, so we, it is our choice. However, automated collection, uniform barrels and automated collection is what will drive competition through a procurement process. And so in order to, if we want to, you know, put the most attractive procurement on the table, we have some work to do on our end to think about that. There are, we've been looking at DEP grants related to uniform barrels, but there's a lot of, you know, public process with that, it's a big, it would be a big change for our town.
And so there are people who can't handle the bulk?
Yeah, there's, there's a few different ways we can go with the sizes of those barrels and options that we can give residents, how that would change the bag situation that we currently use. Again, I think there's a, there's a, there's a large upfront public process that we can do to get some input from residents ahead of time versus just dropping off, you know, barrels at their front step, saying, hey, this is all changed. That also dovetails into, you know, a waste enterprise account potential, you know, we could look at that as a, as a piece of that conversation. So we expect that even without this strike, the contract would increase significantly because the current contract was a holdover from the JRM contract. So we were already really enjoying a good rate through that contract, which was inevitably going to go up. Now with the strike, it probably, I'm sure, will be even more of a cost impact. But there's a lot of environmental benefits to having uniform barrels, you know, from keeping things from littering all over town every time we have curbside collection. And then having the transfer station is, I mean, what we have in Manchester is really a premium offer. Most towns either have one or the other. So that's definitely going to be a big topic for the upcoming year.
And, and we can talk about it in length in two, three days.
Yes. We had a MBTA municipal coordination meeting last week or the week before. I have, I'm going to be scheduling a follow-up meeting with them. Really, this was to talk about preparing for the winter season, who's maintaining the bus stops, how are they maintaining them, the train stations, more of a general, hey, let's get ready for snow season. They also are having issues with the the crossings and salt building up in the, in where our road crossings are in every town. And so coming up with maybe a different way of how to approach those areas and coordinating that with the DPW. But I did ask them if we could do a one-on-one meeting here in Manchester to talk a little bit more specific about some of the issues that you brought up at our last select board meeting, so getting that scheduled.
The other thing too, I learned in the meantime, was it appears, I have, let's put it this way, I have found no evidence that the 70, whatever parking spaces that are MBTA spaces are being managed.
Right.
So given our dire need of parking in the downtown, it's a waste to just let them, whoever wants to park there can park there for as long as they want, they appear to be completely unused.
Yeah, I don't think they've really ever had it.
Right, and that's a lost opportunity when we're talking about, you know, and today I went, I just tried to go to Dunkin's at 9 o'clock, boy, you couldn't find parking anywhere for anything. And, and so it's just, I think that has to be a subject of what we might want to take a look at. You talked about next, next week, I mean, sorry, Thursday night, what are some subjects? Again, parking, you know, the boat placards we have here for the non-residents. I got to tell you, they go unused more often than they are full. And so is that something, do we want to manage that capacity a little differently, maybe during the high months, instead of allocating them to boaters for a full, you know, all of those spaces for an entire season? Or do we want to do it on the weekends or the, you know, so I just think we, the feedback we got from the last two parking studies is that we have plenty of parking spaces, but we don't manage them. And everything I am learning in the past, you know, month or two, I agree with that. We have a lot of white lines that are not being managed, so it's an opportunity.
I do see the placards are emptied all the time.
Yeah.
I do see.
That's along the fence.
Yeah.
And, and just because resident-only parking is managed from May 1 to October, that doesn't mean those placards, you know, need to be valid for that entire boating season. We could limit it to July and August or something and the rest of the year.
Just hoping to use their placards, put all the spaces in the same pool.
You know, so I think there's options there, we, we could really do a lot to free up parking if we, you know.
Yeah, maybe like, yeah, that's probably a good idea, don't designate certain spots, just let them, wherever they find a spot, that's what you get, yeah.
Well, specifically to MBTA, I got the sense that they are looking for partners in the municipalities on management.
Yep.
And so I think like you, it's an opportunity there that we could, you know, help them and get a little something, you know, for ourselves.
And get some help from ourselves on, what are we going to do about those train tracks that are going to be underwater and then not in too distant future?
We've also been keeping a close eye on Hurricane Erin. Luckily, it's, it looks like it's going to be heading offshore, but it, as it was over the last like week or so, you know, there were some moments there of, you know, which way is this track going ahead? And it's the first hurricane of the season, and it drastically increased from a tropical storm to a Hurricane V and picked up intensity. Is it?
I think it was downgraded to a four now.
It's now downgraded.
Oh, three.
Oh, that's good. But for a moment there, it really picked up.
It's huge. The waves are going to come.
We're definitely going to see, yeah, rip tide and, and, but luckily it's
Six or seven-foot waves.
It's Thursday, Thursday, Friday.
Do we have lifeguards?
Yeah, until the
Would you maybe want to
Yeah, I think we do, yeah.
Open close off the beach or whatever, but yeah.
As long as, yeah, I think, I think it's fully staffed, including both the bath house and lifeguards and whatever. Red flag up now.
Yeah.
I had a introductionary, an introduction meeting with the Sustainability Committee. I've been working on the COA Director job description. I'm hoping to meet with the COA Board to get their input. I've talked with Brandon over in Essex 2 about some supplementary services that we could find in the meantime. With this, you know, with this one, it's, it's not as simple as just taking the old job description and reposting it because of the future of the Council on Aging with the new senior center. So we want to make sure that the job description is, you know, preparing us for the future. So it's, we're trying to get input from the friends, from the board, from neighboring communities that have a senior center, and really make sure that we advertise it correctly. We had a library site visit last week too, to talk about the grounds at the library, so with Chuck and Nate and some of the friends. So we're working on some needs there after the generator was installed and some irrigation repairs and just general ground maintenance. Meet with Colonial Power this week on the municipal aggregation. That has been approved by the state, so now we're going to really get into the rollout process. And then early next week, I'm going over to Essex on Monday or Tuesday, Monday. Congressman Molton is coming to do a, an event with the Regional Emergency Management Team to talk about, you know, federal funding and things of that nature. So I'll be, be going over there on Monday too to be, make sure that we're present at the, at the event. And that's all I have.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.